We have Pastor John Meadows from Christian Life Assembly here to do our invocation. Pastor?
Let's stand. Lord, we thank you that we can come here today and honor you and seek your guidance and your wisdom. I thank you for a city that opens its meetings with prayer. Thank you for these commissioners that commit their time to the service of our city. Pray that you would bless them, give them wisdom and guidance, and the time that they commit to this city, Lord, that you would return it to them. And we just give this meeting to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Leading us in the pledge will be Commissioner Cook.
Please join me in the pledge. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the roll call now, please.
Commissioners Diana Cook.
Present.
Dr. Miguel Coronado.
Present.
Cassandra Harvey.
Present.
Raj Marley. Absent. Fabian Terciano. Absent. Vice Chair Randy Hall.
Here.
Chairman James Bowes. Absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have, Dr. Miguel Coronado has moved in and joined us. This is his first night here on the dais with us in Planning Commission. We're gonna let him hit the ground running with us tonight. So, welcome and enjoy yourself up here. It's a kind of an exciting thing to get to do. Actually, it's a very exciting thing to get to do. So, welcome to our little group here.
Thank you.
So, we'll start with public business from the floor. If any individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of 10 minutes is provided at this time during which input may be given regarding agenda items. Individual speakers are limited to two minutes each. Any person that would like to address the Planning Commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker card for the recording secretary and identify the agenda item you would like to discuss. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the Planning Commission at this time such an item is discussed by the Planning Commission. Speakers' cards are available at the rear of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Mr. Ludiki, is there any speakers?
We have no early speakers, Mr. Chairman. Vice Chairman.
Excuse me. In an uncontested public hearing, an oral staff report will not be presented if no one in the audience wishes to speak in opposition to the item to be heard. The applicant has received the staff report and agrees to abide by the conditions recommended in the report, and three, the members of the commission wish to waive the staff report. The chairman will then entertain a motion to act on this item. Before we go to the consent calendar, do we have to have me as the chair? One time we did that in the past.
No, as the vice chair, you step into the role automatically when the chairman is not present.
Okay, then the next question is for Ms. Corbett. We only have me that was at the last meeting for minutes. Would you please explain to our commissioners what they have to do?
Vice Chairman, while I think it might be acceptable for the minutes to be approved, assuming everybody's actually read them, I think in an abundance of caution, I would recommend we just continue that item until the next meeting.
Thank you. So, if on the consent calendar approval of the minutes from July 21st, 2014, do I have a motion that we continue those? So?
I second.
All those in favor?
Motion passes four zero. The item will be placed on the September regular meeting.
Thank you. On our continued public hearing, item number two is our Transit Orientated Development Zones, the TOD zones. This is a continued public meeting from July, and we're gonna open this for discussion from the commissioners or listen for any kind of speakers from the community that would like to talk about it, if there's any. If anybody wants to talk about it. If we don't want to talk about it, we can continue it till the next meeting, which is in September. Any speakers?
I have no speakers' cards on the item this evening, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Vice Chairman. And I guess from staff's perspective, it's really in the commission's hands as to whether they are at the point of being comfortable. We did provide you with a matrix indicating the comments that we've received, the changes proposed where we feel that they could be made. And it's really at the point that the commission is comfortable that we would draft a proposed resolution for you recommending the approval of the general plan amendment and the zone change to the city council. We could do that for September, or we could wait and hear that direction from you at the September meeting. It's up to you as a group.
So, I'm looking for direction from the commission if we want to have them draft the document, and then we can move on. This is the third meeting. That's correct that we've had discussion. We've refined it quite a bit. My feeling is, is it would be nice to have a document at the next meeting.
If that's a consensus of the commission, we can certainly prepare that for your September meeting. Obviously, as the commission, you don't have to approve that at that meeting. You could discuss it additionally, but we will have it available for you at your next agenda.
Do I have a motion for creating the document for Transit Orientated Development Zone?
So.
I second that.
Okay, so leaves us to vote on it.
Motion passes four zero, and we'll have the draft resolutions in place.
Thank you very much.
For your next meeting.
New public hearing is Conditional Use Permit Number 14-07. Public hearing is open. Are there any speakers on this one? Mr. Ludiki?
We do have two speakers' cards, both from the applicant, Mr. Vice Chairman. I have no cards indicating opposition.
And the name that wants to speak? Who wants to speak?
I have both Margareth Rico and Merle McLernan, who I believe is the representative or the architect for the applicant.
Do both of you want to speak and tell us what you have in mind? Or speak separately?
Shall we have the report? It's the case for a second.
Welcome.
I'll start briefly. Merle McLernan, architect on the project. Just as the verbiage explains, they want to do a banquet hall. They're looking for private events. We've gone through a lot of code issues with it, made sure everything worked. Pretty straightforward project, and I've pretty much done all the code research on it. I wanna...
Tell us what you'd like to do with your...
Well, I went through all the conditions, and I agree. I...
You agree to all the conditions? The closing early, the... As a commission, we'd have some kind of worries about having a venue like this open up because of, in the past, we've had problems with shootings and crime and disturbances in the parking lot. And there are conditions that are going to have to be addressed in there, and...
Yes, they are. They're very specific.
I'm just curious how you're gonna handle some of the people in the parking lots that will move out after they have consumed the alcohol. Do you have plans for that, or...?
Well, yes. Yes, well, security. We have, what you guys requested, security for the parking lot, security for the inside, checking on the people, how they drinking the alcohol, when they leave also. So, we'll do the best, I mean. It's hard to do with a lot of people, but we'll do the, all the requirements that we need for the event to be complete in safety.
But you understand ultimately, you'll be responsible for all of those people. Okay? Does the commission have any questions that I'd like to ask the applicant?
Do I have a question? Are you planning on letting other people come in and have venues there when you're not there? Or will you always be on premise for all events?
Yes, I'll be there for all the events.
And what events are you planning on having now? What type?
We're focused only on a special event like wedding, quinceañeras, any special events that we can organize for the place.
Would there ever be, besides quinceañeras and weddings, any other type of private parties that you would entertain there?
Yeah, like Christmas party, any special event that the people...
Graduations.
Yeah, graduations. It's, yeah, most of the events.
So, knowing that those are the type of venues that you'll, or parties that you'll have, is it the same level of security that you'll offer for each of those events?
Yes.
So, are we talking security guards? What numbers?
Yes, it depends on the guest the event will be. It depends on the guards.
So...
It's like 100 people will be two security guards for it.
Okay, so we're saying so for each 50 patrons, one security?
One security guard.
Okay, so you feel about adequate?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Question for the architect is, in the venue there, on the floor plan, you have a fire door, or, yeah, a fire door there, and then it moves into office space. Is the office space part of the party area? Is that door gonna be propped open, or is it gonna be alarmed?
Actually, what's gonna happen is, after reviewing it with Craig Earl and Warren over in Building and Safety, we're gonna reclassify part of that office as actually assembly. We have fire protection in the building. We have fire sprinklers, so that makes this possible. The corridor you see at the top, we're gonna raid it. So, in other words, those doors are gonna be spread the proper distance apart, and they're gonna be really easy to see. Having about exits is only half the battle. Seeing them when you wanna exit a building quickly is the other half. So, what you see in the middle is no longer going to be a door. It's just gonna be an opening. There will still be offices up there for management of this process, but they will go through either the front door, or they'll go straight up and to the left. And once they go to the left, they're in a protected area, and that'll be an access.
So, asking our planner staff, we're not gonna have the proposed door, fire door. He's got a different plan now?
It sounds as though the applicant has had a discussion with our building folks in terms of what the fire code requirements would be and so forth. The exiting, sounds like it's probably resolved a little better with the solution that they've proposed. I think the question, and I'm not sure that I heard the answer to it, that the commission may have wanted to hear, was, does that allow for additional assembly area as part of an event to move beyond where it currently is located?
Yes.
The answer is that's an exit access path.
Exit access.
So, this plan, except for relocating a door, is not going to change. What we have to do is account for the number of people and make sure they can all get out. So, we're gonna do that. And what we don't want to do is create any small nooks and crannies where people can collect. So, what the fire department and Building and Safety has directed, and we went over this together, is to change the rating of a corridor. Even though it's fire sprinkler, you don't have to rate it. The proper thing to do is to rate it, so that once people leave that room, they're protected. So, if you run out of either door, you're no longer in an environment where if there was a fire or anything like that, you're no longer part of that room. You've safely left that area. So, that assembly use is really critical, both security, which we've discussed, and just straight emergency access. So, that's what we're doing.
We have a staff meeting on Monday nights prior to this meeting where we are shown this stuff, and this door was an issue in the last meeting. And normally, there would be an upgrade or something like that in our package, and I'm a little surprised that there's not one here tonight. And so, I need to ask Mr. Ludiki if that, what is being proposed tonight on this plan is normal, or...
It's not unusual for specific details to change as, after a project's approved or even during its review process in order to comply with codes or to make for a safer situation, which it sounds like this is the issue. I think from the commission's standpoint, the biggest question was, did the layout allow for essentially a larger assembly area where you could have more tables, more chairs to be placed than were shown on the original plan? My understanding, and the architect can clarify, is that they would not be doing that. It's simply designed to make it a safer access area for someone to get out of the building in the event that there was a fire or some other emergency.
Just out of the ordinary for me. That's why I wanted his clarification. Your answer satisfied me.
That is true. This is what we're gonna do for the assembly use. The square footage shown in that one footprint, I think it's a little over 2,800 square feet. That's what we intend to put people in. The rest of this is administrative in nature, paths of travel. They have a storage room for chairs on the upper left. It's a little storage room there. The rest of it's administration, and that's for her to be in while they're managing events and while they're talking to people that wanna plan them. So, that's definitely true. We worked out the code solution last Wednesday, so that explains why I didn't quite get to you in time. They brought it up to me, and Chris shot me a note and said, hey, let's work out these exits. They are marginal on compliance. So, we came back and we looked at a better solution. So, that's what we're gonna go with. I would hope that we would definitely condition that anyway, you know, just as a, I mean, normal condition is to comply with all the fire department and building and safety issues.
I'm pretty sure that's in the condition list. Yes.
It's in here somewhere.
Ms. Rico, do you agree with everything that's been said? That's not gonna be used for additional assembly? It's only going to meet the code?
Yes, I do.
One more question for the applicant, Ms. Rico. It says the applicant must develop a policy on how security officers will address intoxicated patrons leaving the parking lot. Do you have any kind of policy yet developed for that, or...?
Not at this moment, but I'm willing to do that, too.
Okay, 'cause that's part of the stuff here, and I'm really kind of interested in what you're gonna come up with, because when we were in our meeting last Monday, we asked the city if there was a standard policy, and there isn't yet. So, you'll be breaking some ground here. Does anybody have anything else to say?
When are you planning to open this facility?
As soon as possible. I've been working on that, so it just depends on what the city wants, and we're working on that to open it. It's not ready yet, so...
That means we could go visit it?
Can you guys go visit? Yeah, of course. Yeah, you guys can check how it is. We're still working on it and working with Merle, what he's going through all the city thing.
I have the same concern. About what you just mentioned as far as the alcohol and how we're gonna deal with the intoxicated people drinking and driving, so on and so forth. Big issue.
Yes. Is there any more comment?
You know, especially just kind of paybacking on what the doctor said, especially with no patrons being admitted after 12:00 midnight, no alcohol service or consumption after that. So, I think we almost need more, I guess something more firm than they're working on it. I guess I don't understand that.
It says she just must develop the policy. It doesn't say she had to have it, so I think that's something in the future.
So, we can approve or make a motion and approve based on...
Or do it like we did with Industry Theater and have them come back in in six months and look.
I think, I'd feel better doing that as opposed to just a blanket, making that motion. I mean, how else would we know? We're going, we're pretty much flying blind on that.
That's been done in the past where we've had a venue like this where we made a condition that we'd come back in and revisit it in six months. It doesn't cost you anything to do it. It's just that we run another meeting and see how things worked out.
Yeah, that's fine. I agree.
Anybody have anything else to say?
I agree with all.
If there's nothing else, then we can call the public hearing closed. Thank you very much for coming and presenting this project to us. Do we have any more discussion? Does anybody want to try to frame that motion with the six-month review?
Would we have to know the date specifically, Jocelyn?
The only thing staff would like to know is, are you saying six months from now or six months from their opening, or six months...
I would submit from the opening, because how else, I mean, if they don't open for a couple of other...
So, my understanding of the purpose of the condition is to really just monitor how the operation is proceeding?
Correct.
Vice Chair Hall, we do actually have that as condition number 20?
Condition 20? So... Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Mine stops at 10.
On the back?
Yeah. It's number 20 says, "The use shall be reviewed six months after commencement date to ensure the protection of neighborhood tenants and any adverse effects." So, we don't have to do that?
I'm happy with that, okay.
So, I'm looking for a motion for more discussion? More discussion or a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution number 14-10, Improving Condition Use Permit Number 14-07.
I second that.
You take the vote now? Good luck.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Good luck.
Item number four, Conditional Use Permit Number 14-09. A public hearing is open. Applicant is the 99-cent-only store. Addition of Type 20 Off Sale Beer and Wine Alcoholic Beverage License. Reincidental Off Sale of Alcoholic Beverages at a grocery and consumer goods store, Commercial Plan Development Zone. Do we have a motion? Do we have discussion? It says here. Any discussion or any speakers?
I have no speakers' cards, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody have any questions?
This was briefly brought up to me as far as selling alcohol at a 99-cent store? Is that what we're discussing? Is that what it is?
Yes. All the things that run through your mind about singles are addressed in the condition list. Singles have to be 40 ounces or more. Wine has to be sold in packages that the manufacturer, and can't be broke up. So, those were things that ran through my head, too, when I saw the two together.
Yeah.
If that's what you were thinking.
Yes. So, this would be the first 99-cent store with alcohol?
I believe that the current, the one on Valley Central sells alcohol. However, it was established before the city modified its alcohol ordinance to require a CUP for alcohol sales in these types of establishments. And to my knowledge, they may sell single containers. I don't know. It's only been in the last five years or so that the city has really begun to restrict the single container sale.
There was some discussion at last Monday's meeting about whether or not there was some cold storage available, that those issues get resolved?
It's the intention of the applicant to, based on the floor plan that was provided, to have it not be in the cold storage facility.
So, it'll all be just on a shelf? It'll be warm, okay?
That's my understanding.
Do we have any more discussion? Any, no speaker cards, so do I have a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution number 14-11, Improving Conditional Use Permit Number 14-09.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Motion passes four zero.
Well, that brings us to the end of our agendized items. Now, we have any director's announcements?
The only announcement, Mr. Vice Chairman and the members of the commission, we do intend to try to, once again, take up the temporary sign issue, starting in September. So, there is a Dropbox folder set up for anyone to submit pictures of likes, dislikes, anything of that type, and just a reminder of that. The other thing, as you'll recall, we do not have, or we have several staff members that will be missing, not missing, but gone, for the regularly scheduled date of the Planning Commission in September. Maybe missing's not a bad idea. And so, we did discuss that in your special meeting last Monday, and we look to set the meeting for, I believe, the 22nd of September rather than the 15th. So, in your adjournment, although you are adjourning to the regular agenda review meeting on Monday, September 8th, it would be worth noting that the meeting will shift from the normal date of the 15th to the 22nd of September, if that continues to be the commission's desire.
Do we need to make a motion, or should we just have agreement?
Assistant City Attorney says make a motion.
Do I have a motion to move the regular meeting to the 22nd of September?
I move that we move this, I make a motion that we move the September meeting to September 5th, September 22nd.
Second.
All those in favor?
Passes four zero, so your meeting for September will be on the 22nd, but your special meeting or agenda review will remain on the 8th of September.
Thank you. Now, we have commission's agenda. This is where the commission brings up ideas. I was wondering, on the sign ordinance, I just, we're dropping Dr. Coronado right into this shark tank of the sign ordinance. Did you get a good feel for what we're looking for on that?
No, actually, no. Did we discuss that, Joy? No, we did not, okay.
Is there a link you could give him to maybe bring him up to speed on it, so...
Yes, I, maybe we can...
This is the fun part. Maybe you could go over where the genesis for the sign ordinance came from, the reasonable one that...
Yes, the, there was direction provided from the city council, I believe, may have been January, possibly February, asking the commission to take a look at the city's provisions on temporary signs and banners. And we have basically restricted the discussion to that, and the goal is to see whether or not there are reasonable changes or regulations that could be adopted in regards to how those are handled within the city. Part of the discussion, or part of the concern, I think, expressed by the council was, they didn't know whether the current restrictions were too restrictive. They felt maybe there should be some evaluation of that. We began to review that item, I believe, in March and April. However, there was, there were other issues that came up, and it was shelved at that point. The commission did agree among themselves that if they saw examples of things they thought were well-done or things that they did not want to allow in terms of temporary signage, that they would provide photos or other kinds of identifying information on that so that that could be discussed. There was, as I mentioned, a Dropbox folder set up. So, we're really only at the point right now of trying to identify the types of... So we're really only at the point right now of trying to identify the types of, types of signage that may be acceptable, that that we certainly wouldn't want to recommend approval on and, and so forth. What I can do, we did provide an initial staff report and we'll provide that to our, Dr. Coronado, our newest member. And in fact, maybe we'll just resend it out to the commission as a whole because that sort of listed out some of the cities that we investigated and some of the issues that you have to look at, size, duration, type and so forth. And I think it would be a good refresher as we, as we begin to move into the discussion again.
So we'll look forward to those emails?
Yes.
Anybody have anything on the agenda, the commission? I have one other thing that I'd like to bring up. We had a shooting at a Lancaster nightclub on Avenue I and I, it's a headline in an online news source and I'm just wondering if we have a nightclub on Avenue I? Wasn't aware that we did.
The commission has not approved any nightclub on Avenue I. We actually, in a brief discussion earlier today, and I, I haven't had a chance to talk to the city's public safety people, it was either at a bar which has existed at the corner of, I think it's, is it 13th or King, yeah, yeah, that has been there for a, a long period of time. Or there's another business next door which there seems to be some indication, maybe one thing during the day and becomes a nightclub during the night. But if that's the case, I can assure you that as a commission, you didn't approve it, so.
It just makes us all worry when we have to approve like tonight, you know, something very akin to a nightclub. So if there's no more from the commission, we'll move on to public business from the floor, non-agendaized items. This portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to address the commission on any subject regarding city business. Under state legislation, no action can be taken on non-agenda items. Members of the public should be aware of this when addressing the commission regarding items not specifically referenced on the agenda. Please complete a speaker card for the recording secretary. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Are there any speakers?
I have no cards, Mr. Vice Chairman.
So then we need to adjourn this meeting to the special agenda review on Monday, September 8th, 2014 at 5:30 PM. And we have changed our regular meeting till September 22nd. Thank you all.